Okay, we're ready to go.
Great. We'll call the meeting of July 7, 2021 of the Planning Commission to Order. If staff could call roll, please.
Yes, I will, Chair. James Guerrero.
President.
Ryan Pearson.
Here.
Paul Wegman.
President.
Philip Combs.
Here.
Lynn Larson.
Here.
Connie Coleman Lackady. Absent. And Don Daniels.
Here.
You have quorum, Chair.
Great, thank you so much. Before us, we have the minutes of June 16, 2021. Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes as written.
Mr. Wegman made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Larson, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct, okay. So any changes or amendments to the comments, to the, to minutes of June 16 hearing or seeing none? Okay, I don't see any hands raised or any changes. So all those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Seeing or hearing none, minutes passed as written? Thank you. Any changes to the agenda by staff?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open up public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to the fellow commissioners on any topic, you're more than welcome to go ahead and speak. Do we have any signed up at this time, Ms. Spear or Karen?
We have one person signed up, yes.
Okay, go right ahead and please come up to the podium and state your name and your city reside in, and you have three minutes. Yep, go right ahead, Mr. Speeth.
Well, this is going to be quick tonight. Just wanted to welcome you back. I'm sure tired of this year and a half plus of of no meetings and watching on TV or computer. Can't make any comments that were worth a damn, other than putting my computer down and turn it off. Did that a few times. Let's hope we get back to normal here pretty soon. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Glenn. Any other individuals either online, YouTube, in person, wishing to speak in the public commentary? Seeing or hearing none at this time. At this time, we'll close the public comments. It will have the continuance of the public hearing of 2021 Annual Development Regulations Amendments. And this is a continuation from the June 16, 2021. So Ms. Spear, do we have any other additional comments?
No additional comments have been received, Mr. Chair.
Okay, is there anyone else? That's the only thing that we have then at this time, is any additional written comments, is that correct?
Correct.
So if there's no additional comments in writing, then we'll close that public hearing of the 2021 Annual Development Regulation Amendments. At this time, we'll close that public hearing. So then we move to number seven unfinished business, and it doesn't look like we have any of that. So we move to number eight, the action of the 2021 Annual Development Regulation Amendments. Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and we're just going to keep messing with technology tonight. One second.
No problem.
I think that worked. If you'll bear with me just one moment, Planning Commission, I will be opening a presentation regarding the annual development regulations. So the, the commission has already had its public hearing that was just closed, actually. It had been extended for between the last meeting and this in order to be able to gather any additional comments that may have been submitted in writing. There were none received. So tonight, it's a matter of taking a look at the development regulation package as it stands. And the commission, if you're ready to do so, consider any amendments and/or take action this evening. And why am I looking at Mr. Daniels instead of this presentation? I'll just walk through it. You don't need to see it, it's okay. Sorry. The commission is taking action this evening. The schedule as it stands would be, if the commission takes action this evening, the council will pick it up on July 26 and then move forward to public hearing and action sometime in August. The amendments, if you'll recall from the discussions that have happened over the last several meetings, include updating references to state statute and administrative code within titles 5, 14, and 15 of the Lakewood Municipal Code, as well as several related to various sections of Title 18A. So very quickly, I'll walk through those. One is showing a map where the JBLM flight patterns overlay the city of Lakewood. In 18A10 also is updating the text regarding director's interpretations. There's several definitions being updated. There's explaining the review and appeal authorities on form-based code decisions now that we have two sub-area plans that are governed by form-based codes. Again, director's determinations in 18A40, allowing personal services as a use in the commercial one zone. And then there's several corrections in 18A40.110, which were actually brought to our attention by Commissioner Guerrero, so thank you for that. There was some inadvertent omission of certain allowed uses within several zones. So three family dwelling units being allowed in the neighborhood commercial one and two and the arterial residential commercial zone. And then also allowing three family dwelling units in the MF1, multifamily one zone. 18A60.090, talking about clarifying the minimum lot width in the mixed residential two zone. And 18A60.100, correcting the rounding of fractions, that's an issue that staff identified. Updating the parking regulations in 18A.80. And then several items per recent changes to the Wireless Service Facilities Regulations for 18A95 based on FCC decisions. And then again, there's the Scrivener Corrections in 18A for RCW and WAC sections. So with that, I'm sorry you can't see this motion, I'll say it out loud, to approve Resolution 2021.03, which is the number of the resolution in your packet this evening, which would formalize the Planning Commission's recommendation regarding the 2021 Annual Development Regulation Amendments and forwarding the recommendation to this Lakewood City Council for consideration and action. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back over to you in case there's any questions.
Thank you. Is there any questions before we take the, or have a motion for the 2021-03 in resolution to recommend to the city council of these adoptions of these items that Ms. Spear has discussed and presented to us? So I can see, let me go back to the screen if I can, sorry, I can't see. I can only see Ms. Spear and Karen, I can't see the regular dais, so. You can speak, you can speak up at this time if there's a motion or any comments. There we go.
So moved.
So was that Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Larson made a motion to approve or make a motion to of this resolution 2021-03. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Guerrero.
Mr. Guerrero, second. Okay, any other discussion? No, was that Mr. Combs? Did you have a discussion or a question? Okay, you're good. Mr. Pearson, Mr. Wegman, all good. Okay, so we have a first and a second regarding this. All those in favor by saying aye on the 2021-03, recommend to pass it on to the council. All those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose abstentions, hearing none, the 2021-03 resolution passes for recommendation to the city council. Thank you. So now we move to number on new business, the Lakewood's American Rescue Plan Act funds, and it's a discussion with our city community service advisory board members in Lhasa, in United Way, in any other individuals that might be on with us tonight. Ms. Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am going to actually invite those who are on as guests for us this evening. I'm going to promote you to a panelist and then ask you to introduce yourselves. Mr. Combs, could you introduce yourself?
Okay, there you go.
So beginning with, if you don't mind, Mr. Daniels, since I can see the participant list, unless you can as well.
I don't think I can see participants. Let me look, there's 10 of them, let's see.
Yes.
Okay, I can see some of the names.
Okay, so the ones that you don't recognize as planning commissioners, maybe just invite them to introduce themselves.
Okay, go ahead and start, other than the Planning Commission, go ahead and start, see, I got Jim Cave.
Hi, good evening. My name's Jim Cave. I'm with Lhasa and I'm just one of the several people from Lhasa participating tonight.
Great, thank you for joining us tonight. Ms. Joyce Love Day, welcome.
Hello. Hi, thank you for welcoming us here this evening. I'm Joyce Love Day, President of Clover Park Technical College on the Board of Lhasa, and I just appreciate being here this evening to hear the conversation and, and thank you for, you know, it's a great time to be able to be looking at what we can be doing in our community. So thank you for including us.
Absolutely. Good to see you too, Joyce. Thank you. Walt Summers.
Hi, as you said, my name is Walt Summers. I am the President of the Lhasa Board and I am here to listen, observe, and add support to the statements that I'm sure Jan Hutchins will be making.
Great, thank you, Walt. Jim Capriva, I'm sorry.
No problem. Hi, my name's Jim Capriva. I'm the Communications Manager for the City of Lakewood, and I'll be working with Tiffany on the Public Engagement Course of the ARPA Program.
Thank you, thank you, Jim. And Brian Humphries?
I am Brian Humphries, the Human Services Coordinator for the City of Lakewood.
All right, welcome. Good to see you again. You had a great presentation to the Lakewood Rotary the other day, so thank you, right?
Yeah, if you say so, let's hope so.
Yeah. Let's see, Chris Gleason?
Hi there, I am the Communications Director for Comprehensive Life Resources, and I'm happy to listen in tonight and hear what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's see, who else did I miss? How about Kim Zucker?
Hey, sorry, I've come with a little camera issue, but I'm going to fix it very quickly. I'm the CEO of Conference Life Resources and appreciate being included tonight.
Thank you so much. And Philip Combs, Walt Summers. That's all I see on my list. I think I called everyone. Is there anyone else that is online that I didn't not see?
Actually, Mr. Chair, we have one person from Lhasa here in person, so she's going to come to the dais and introduce herself.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Jan Hutchins. I'm Executive Director of Lhasa. We're just a couple minutes down the road, so I found it just as easy just to show up.
Oh, great, thank you, welcome, Jan. All right. Ms. Spear.
All right, I'm going to keep going here with some technical issues going on in the background, so my apologies. All right, juggling, juggling. So thank you, everybody, for coming, and thank you for those who did log in as well. It's great. This is our inaugural hybrid meeting here at the City Hall, and we'll get it all figured out. But what we're doing this evening with the folks that have joined us in addition to the Planning Commission is talk about the American Rescue Plan Act. And there's a number of things that are going on right now per city council direction. The council asked in late March to go ahead and have community engagement occur before the council were to decide and provide direction about how to spend the dollars that are coming to the city. And so if you'll give me just a second, I'm going to try to log in to be able to present this to you like I should be able to. It's going to happen, don't worry. And I do appreciate everyone's patience. And that's not going to happen, so. All right. Again, I'm going to fly by the seat of my pants, so here we go. Okay. The American Rescue Plan Act, as most people are aware, was adopted earlier this year by the federal government, signed by President Biden in March. And the decision was made to split money and direct money specifically to local governments. So out of a total of $362 billion that was allocated toward the state and local level, there was a specific section of that money set aside for what are called metropolitan cities. And the city of Lakewood is one. Lakewood is a population of 60,000 plus, and anything over 50,000 is part of the metropolitan city bucket. So the way they've decided to distribute these dollars is over a two-year period. There is one half of it available this year, and then 365 days after the first bucket has been released to the city, the second bucket becomes available. They call them tranches. So tranche one and tranche two. The total that Lakewood is going to be receiving is about $13.8 million, and so divide that in half, it's about $6.9 million in each tranche. So the question then becomes for the city council ultimately, how are these millions of dollars going to be spent? In comparison to what occurred with the coronavirus relief funds, there is about seven times the amount of money as was received under that program for the city to deal with now. The rules of the game are that the funds must be committed by the end of 2024. So one reason why the city council is taking the time to reach out to you as interest groups and also the general public is there is time to decide how to use this thoughtfully and really effectively. And so by the end of this year, I'm sure the council will have made some decisions, but the, the decision on all of the funds being committed is not, deadline isn't until the end of 2024. And then the time to exhaust funds, for instance, on some capital projects that might be scheduled or any other programmatic thing that will take more than one year, is actually by the end of 2026. There have been policy decisions already made by the council. First of all, that ARPA is to be used for one-time costs under the, the rule itself, the ARPA Act. But the council has said that there may be exceptions here if there's a certain program that needs some base money to get going, and then other funding would, would help after a while, for instance. There's also, again, this idea of community engagement being needed. So between now and August 23rd, this this program of community engagement is ongoing. And we've done a number of outreach meetings now with city boards and commissions. But tonight is Planning Commission's turn, along with Community Service Advisory Boards, and then you heard those that are guests this evening as well. One other thing that the city council has already decided is that 1% of the ARPA dollars, so about $70,000 for two years running in '22 and '23, are going to be dedicated toward the Community Service Advisory Board budget. So it will go significantly higher for those two years, and they will decide how to spend those funds. And then the final decision by council was to make sure these dollars are used to fill gaps in funding. They're not supposed to be used to duplicate programs or assistance to businesses or individuals that are already being funded at the federal or the state or even the county level. There are four categories within which ARPA funds can be spent. First is dealing with the negative economic impacts to COVID, or from COVID, I should say. And that is including to households, small businesses, nonprofits, or industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality that were, that were most severely affected. Secondly, to respond to workers performing essential work by providing premium pay. Third is the provision of government services to the extent that there was a loss of revenue due to taxes going down or, or services being closed, businesses being closed during 2020 in particular. And then the fourth is to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. To clarify and go back into a little more detail about not duplicating what the federal or state or county levels are doing, within ARPA, the federal allocations, excuse me, have already identified $37.5 billion for housing assistance, renters, homeowners, and those who are experiencing homelessness. There's also $5 billion allocated to people experiencing homelessness through the Home Investment Program. And then at the state level, the state legislature allocated in the '21 to '23 biennial budget, $658 million to extend rental assistance, $187 million for foreclosure assistance, $1.7 billion for reopening, addressing learning loss and other education costs for schools, $528 million for childcare grants and provider rates. Turning to Pierce County, and actually, the liaison to you, Planning Commission, is city council member Paul Bokey, who happens to be the lead ARPA person at the Budget Department for the County Council, so he can certainly speak to this as well. But the county received its first tranche of about $88 million. $50.5 million were allocated right away for emergency uses, and you'll see a partial list of that here. The remainder of that first tranche, about $37 million, will be allocated later on once the county undergoes similar deliberative process that the city council here is doing. And then the second tranche will come to the county next year. So in this first emergency operation by this one ordinance they've adopted already, you'll see food banks, youth diversion and summer programs, financial coaching, affordable housing, action strategy consultant, some assistance to homeless services and program coordinators. Economic stabilization is another category where funding was allocated. Entrepreneurship and technical assistance grants, business assistance, workforce development. And then there's also access to housing, which is being discussed by the county council right now. And one of them is a potential purchase for a hotel, for instance, for emergency services, emergency shelter, I should say, which would then convert in a couple of years to permanent supportive housing. And there is a second potential purchase of a hotel in Fife, the location yet to be named for similar purposes. So within the city's discussion so far, as I mentioned, the city council held a retreat in late March. And they did identify some initial expenditures where they wanted, that they wanted to be considered in addition to the public input that would be received. So restoring lost revenue and providing services that may have been cut, as well as staffing for the city which may have been cut. Looking again at that 1% of the ARPA tranches going to the Community Services Advisory Board for allocation. Establishing a youth employment program. Rental assistance and mortgage assistance and human services, leveraging those services that others might provide. Providing navigator services, for lack of a better term, that's kind of the, the phrase that's being used in relation to ARPA for people that assist businesses or residents to find where they can ask for either financial or other resource assistance. So the city of Lakewood may not be the one saying, here's a grant, use it as you need. It may be the city of Lakewood saying, this is where you would go at the state level in order to be able to request that grant. Assisting with the construction of a veteran homeless resource center, supporting Lhasa, so we're glad to have them here tonight to talk about this. Maintaining the existing affordable housing that's within the city. So whether that's increasing funding for the city's senior or low-income housing grant program and/or increasing support for partnerships with Rebuilding Together South Sound, Habitat for Humanity, or Homeownership Center of Tacoma, as well as other entities that may be out there. And then some city facility improvements to assist with remote or, I don't want to say COVID-friendly, that's not the way you mentioned this, but post-COVID improvement. So for instance, the city reader board, so should City Hall be ever have to close again, you'd still be able to see what's going on with city government or community events, et cetera. Improving the city website. Looking at consolidating city operations to the first and second floor, updating this chamber to better facilitate hybrid or fully virtual meetings. Looking at the online court services as well, and providing Wi-Fi access throughout the city. So as people may have to remote into work or school, having that Wi-Fi access be that much more available, as well as for health reasons, allowing and making sure there's water access at city parks for hand washing, for instance. So I also wanted to make sure people were aware that there is a section of ARPA that refers specifically to what are called hardest-hit communities and families. Those that suffered the most under the restrictions per COVID, but also those that have had systemic health and economic inequities historically. The, the recovery funds that are provided to the city of Lakewood are allowed to be used for certain ways which are presumed to be eligible within these areas of the city or, or for these populations. So it can be promoting the healthy childhood environments, addressing educational disparities, investments in housing in neighborhoods, and also addressing social determinants of health, for instance, remediation of lead hazards in the water infrastructure system in older areas of the city. This is a map of what would qualify to be a hardest-hit community. Sorry, Jim, we're looking at you. The map shows Tillicum and Woodbrook, Springbrook.
Pardon, Tiffany?
Yeah.
I don't think you're sharing your screen. Are you able to hit the?
I'm not, and it's because I can't figure out how, so apologies. So again, it's Tillicum and Woodbrook, Springbrook, Lakeview, and parts of Montevista in the northeast part of the city. So all of these areas where if there are investments with ARPA dollars done, it is assumed that they will be eligible. We don't have to prove to the federal government over time that these, these were qualified uses. So after all of that, the reason we're all here tonight, including our guests, is to get feedback from you, Planning Commission members as individuals, the guests that we have from Community Services Advisory Board and/or Lhasa Korean Women's Association or Comprehensive Life Resources. And so we're hoping that this becomes almost just a kind of a round robin discussion amongst all of us about what are the best ways that these dollars could be used. Understanding that there's certain categories that they can be spent within. There are certain areas of the city where they could be spent to respond to this hardest-hit community idea. But also that there may be something none of us have thought of yet, including the city council when they had their discussion in March. Where do you, as an individual, or you representing the group that you're representing tonight, think these funds should go? And at this point, it's the sky is the limit. So yes, there is two tranches, and there are almost $7 million each. There have been several items that the city council has identified, but it's a minority of the money, so the vast majority of it is still unallocated. So please, if there's ideas and you want to throw them out, now is the time. So I'm going to close down this presentation that most of you weren't able to see anyway, I apologize. And I'm going to go back to sit where I was. And we'll just get started with the discussion, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So how would you like to have those individuals that represent those associations or those businesses to just speak to us at this time? Is that kind of the format you would like to go with, Ms. Spear?
I think that would be the easiest, and those of you who are participants, are you able to raise your hand if you're looking at the participant list through Zoom? Yes, I see that you can do that. So maybe, Mr. Daniels, if you could watch for people raising their hands, they would be the ones that would want to contribute perhaps. And then also, you've got your members of the Planning Commission here to participate as well.
Okay, I've got the participant list, but I don't know about raising the hands. I don't see any hands.
Okay.
So if you.
Ms. Love Day was just opening her, or raising.
Miss Love Day was just opening her or raising her hand.
Okay, so Miss Love Day, go right ahead then.
Okay, and actually I was just kind of making sure you knew what it was going to look like when we raised our hands.
Oh, okay.
I will take a moment.
Oh, I see it now. I do see it now. Excuse me.
Both in the upper corner of the picture and over in the participant list, it's over there. Yeah.
I see it.
Okay, and I know Jan Hutchins is there in the audience and will probably have more to say about this than I, but I will say just a few words. It 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 seems to me like things are converging this year in in many areas and converging at a time to really care for those that that need services the most. And I love the opportunity through ARPA for, you know, I think the focus of it and for really putting an emphasis on communities most, you know, hardest hit by the coronavirus as well as those who just struggle within our society based on many other factors, I think, from from history. And so I think with LASSA, we're seeing some unusual opportunities here. And one of those being some property availability near on Gravelly Lake near LASSA. And we have been doing, having conversations about the opportunity to utilize a fair plot of land there to better serve our community in terms of providing housing for those that that need it. I know that there needs to be a lot more conversation yet about what that will look like and, you know, what's best to go in that area, but it's a wonderful opportunity. I'm excited that LASSA is, has been specifically noted as a place where we can step up and be part of the planning and support of the Lakewood community. So I guess that's all I'll have to say, and I want to make note that Jan, who I see her the back of her head sitting there in the audience today, may have some additional comments.
Oh, thank you so much for your comments. We appreciate it. So Jan, I guess at this time, that's a good segue to to you can continue on. So if you want to go right ahead.
Okay, I was thinking about going out in the parking lot and joining with my phone. It might be easier. I find it interesting that our mission is twofold. And the way I feel that we can best serve our community fits both parts of those missions. The one part of preventing the recurrent homelessness and there's a lot of services to provide housing and services to families, but once they so-called graduate, where do they go to? There isn't enough low income housing. And we have control of a big plot of land at the corner of Fifty Ninth Fair Lawn and Gravelly Lake. It's over an acre and we're proposing to put in fifty units mixed use development for folks that are thirty to eighty percent MRI, some of those units being for transitional housing, some for permanent. And even though we have really focused on families with children, we're having a seeing growing population of seniors. And so maybe some SROs are rather single room occupancy units for older folks as as well. My heart has gone out over the years to the teens, but there's been a lot of programs of late that have been taking care of the teens. I would want to include in that a couple of emergency units. But with the possibility of hotels opening up, that may not be as big a need. It it might be good to have a couple of units there. And I think by the time we got further along in in our planning, we would have a better vision of whether that continued to be a need. The other thing that I see that fits directly into our mission, which is the prevention of homelessness, is that we get phone calls every day from people who are looking for utility assistance because they know that we're doing utility assistance for the city of Tacoma. And in fact, I have the spreadsheet that shows between April and June of this year, we've done over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. As of this afternoon, one hundred eighty seven thousand nine hundred ninety three dollars of utility assistance in the city of Tacoma. And we're turning Lakewood people away. We have a small amount of private funds and we're helping a handful of people with water assistance. But all this emergency rental assistance is fabulous, but if your lights are out, you can still lose your housing. The landlord, you know, once the moratorium is over, a landlord can come in and close your and ask you to leave if you haven't kept up with your utilities. So I see that as a great need as well. And after talking to Brian, additional needs that we see that we would that we would like to work with others on would include workforce development and some sort of medical teams that go out into the community. But right and directly relation to our mission would be developing housing and growing that emergency prevention response. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jan. Okay, anyone else from LASSA will just wish to speak or comments? Go right ahead if you are. I don't see any hands. So, okay, and then if not, how about from Community Service Advisory Board? Anyone wish to comment?
If not, maybe Mr. Humphries could provide a summary of what they have historically spoken about already.
Okay, Mr. Humphries.
Yeah, happy to. I don't think we have anyone joining us tonight right now. Just they had discussed along with the Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board, primarily how they might recommend the council invest that one percent addition to the Human Services General Fund. And what we decided to recommend is we have five existing areas emphasis, you know, youth programming and homelessness prevention and critical stabilization services, behavioral health services, things like that. There are two strategic initiatives that we think are particularly important that we're currently not investing in, but we're putting as much strategic capacity towards as we can. One is youth mental health, that's largely partnership based. And the other one is workforce development, which the city itself has been trying to spearhead. As Jan mentioned, we just simply have a numbers problem. There's one thing in terms of helping people who are already experiencing homelessness, but at some point we have to do something about the pipeline who are at risk of becoming homeless, especially families with children, because when they become homeless, we we often don't see them. They experience homelessness differently. And so since we don't have any great short shorter term or affordable strategies to increase the housing stock or bring the the cost of housing down, the only way to disrupt that pipeline that we can see is to get wages up so families can afford the housing that we do have while we work on a longer strategy. So the recommendation from the Community Services Advisory Board was to put the lion's share of that one percent into the workforce development initiative that we have been building with Lakewood's Promise for the past year. And that's a very communications based initiative. So instead of traditional workforce development, which is very case management, kind of hoping you get a job, we start with the job. And so we say, what are the living wage jobs in Lakewood? What are the training pathways to that job, especially at Clover Park and Pierce College being right in our backyard? And how do we get that actionable information down to the community level? So that's essentially affirming those strategies is what those boards decided.
Great. Thank you for the review with that. I appreciate it. Anyone else then, Ms. Spear? I don't see.
Looks like Miss Love Day has raised her hand.
Okay, Miss Love Day, go right ahead again.
Thank, thank you, and I'd like to take a moment just to follow up on what Brian spoke about. I do think that there's a lot of overlap in some of this and some things that we could be doing in workforce development, as Brian was saying, to prevent people from getting that to that point of eventual homelessness. And I think that we can think broadly. He's he's been a very creative mind, helped me to spur a lot of good conversation around this area. But there could be some things related to navigators or additional scholarships or different additional support or even part of the housing out there, you know, being for people while they are in school to help keep them motivated and keep them in and preventing them from dropping out. One thing I really love about the work that is being done there is that it's focusing, as Brian mentioned, on those higher wage areas so that people can get into living wage jobs and get their foot in the door in an organization and have a career for themselves. So I think there's been a lot of good synergy within Lakewood and a lot of good work happening through Lakewood's Promise and the work that that Brian is doing. So those are my comments.
Great. Thanks. Appreciate it. Anyone else, Ms. Spear?
Is there anybody from Comprehensive Life Resources who would like to comment this evening?
Yeah, I'd love to. This is Kim Zucker. Apologize for my earlier camera issues. I had to switch to another tablet. Anyway, we're rolling with that. So I I would, I love the ideas that are being spoken about. Of course, I would support all of them. I think as an as an employer of about three hundred and fifty people in Pierce County, we are always looking for new employees and I think that matching people with openings in the workforce is really critical. I I love to see things like tuition assistance and childcare support for students. I think it's really important. The state has some apprenticeship programs hopefully coming online around behavioral health. And I'm hoping that our local community colleges will be willing to partner with them on that because I think it's a really important initiative. In any case, I guess what I would want to speak a little bit about is just the behavioral health and and mental health sort of impact from COVID. And to second what you probably already all know, which is that kind of coming behind the pandemic now, we're seeing that the mental health impacts that have kind of been there all along, but I think are exacerbated as people are trying to pick up their lives and go back to whatever normal is going to be for them. At the same time, we're facing a significant workforce shortage in behavioral health. And so our community doesn't have traditional mental health services of enough capacity to meet the need that's coming. And so one of the things I wanted to to bring up is the notion of community resiliency. And I think that a lot of the people who are experiencing right now depression and anxiety that's kind of related to COVID don't necessarily need treatment. We've been through community trauma. We've been through a really essentially a prolonged disaster. And what we know about that from our mental health research is that really their response to disasters is resiliency. It's not treatment. So lots of us are going to be having, you know, struggles with worries, sleeplessness, anxiety. A lot of our kids are going to make, are going to have those struggles and they go back to school. They're going to be out of the routine of that. They're not going to remember exactly all the things they're supposed to do when they, you know, they don't have a, you know, their own home base next to them and that's going to be hard. But again, they don't all need treatment, but they do need their community. In the spring, we got a grant, our agency got a grant with some partners to do some trainings on psychological first aid. And so really what we were trying to do, wanting to do was to train as much of the community as we could to have caring conversations with each other, to really be checking in on each other, to understand the difference between what is a mental health disorder and and somebody that needs treatment, traditional treatment, and and what else can help somebody who isn't really at that point, but is maybe having those beginning struggles because we're looking at wanting to prevent that, right? We want people to get back on track and and to kind of regain all the coping skills and resilience they had. So I I think focusing your your funding on those kinds of initiatives would be really helpful thing. I love the idea of after school programs for, like I said, for our youth. It's been really wonderful to see the county subsidize Sauer programs for youth. I've been really heartened to see a lot of the school districts offer a lot of additional academic support. I would encourage you to think about that. You're going to have kids who need tutoring to catch up. They're not at the schools, aren't going to be able to help everyone do that. And what we know is following behind academically is very much linked to social adjustment. And so the the more we can help our kids catch up in school, the better they're going to do socially and emotionally as well. And the more we can surround them with peers and healthy after school activities, as again, their parents may be struggling with trying to figure out what comes next with jobs, if their housing insecure, those kinds of things, making sure that they're getting those needs met is really important and a way that I think as a community, we can come together. The last thing I wanted to mention is the idea and give some support for the idea of navigators. One of the things I know, having worked in Pierce County for twenty one years now, is that even though the amount of services and resources we have in this community is 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 often very rich, there's often a lot of services, figuring out where they are and how to connect with them is the thing that everyone struggles with. And it doesn't matter whether you are fully insured and you're a project manager at Boeing or if you're somebody who is living in their car, it is not easy for anybody to get their needs met in this, in the healthcare system or in the social safety net system. So I think it's a brilliant idea for the the city to consider during this time period, trying to remove barriers and help people get connected with the services and the funding that's there. Finally, my last kind of pitch is again focusing on youth. I know how important that is for us right now to be supporting our kids so that they get through this and and they come out with good coping skills and that they get back to, you know, their own normal, their childhood, is to consider some home visiting resources. I think your school district is going to be really overwhelmed with families that have needs. A lot of, we we know that the incident report, incident rates of child abuse are way, way down. And while I would love to think that's because there's no child abuse happening, nothing in social science research tells me that. Everything tells me that our our first, our first responders are the people who make reports about child abuse concerns are not seeing kids. And so it is predictable that as kids come back into schools, we may have families that have been struggling and we don't know and and that we weren't getting them the help they needed. And so the idea of our our schools having people they can send out to go connect with families to see what is really happening, help them. If they've been struggling all this time, it could be really, really important. I also know we've lost students that we just, we never connected with. They they disappeared from school roles. We're going to need to find them. So just just some thoughts about maybe things that are being funded in other places and are best funded very locally and and could be really big, be a big impact if the city were to consider those. So thank you so much.
Oh, thank you for your comments, Kim. Appreciate it. Right, anyone else? Let's.
Is there anyone from Korean Women's Association on this evening? Anybody from United Way? I did speak briefly to Donna Ponapinto, who is the executive officer for United Way. And she just mentioned that the Center for Strong Families is something that she's hoping the city will look to support. And she'd actually had a conversation early on with the city manager about that. So that will be brought forward as part of the community engagement feedback we got. But Mr. Cave, Mr. Gleason, anybody else who hasn't spoken yet, or Mr. Summers, anything else you'd like to add?
Okay, how about fellow commissioners? Any fellow commissioners would like to make some comments? Yes, Mr. See, who's this?
Would like to know if this.
Oh, go ahead. Ms. Spear, are you there?
Ms. Spear, we can't hear anymore.
Yeah. Okay, that may have been my my fault. Mr. Larson on the Planning Commission was asking whether West Pierce Fire and Rescue's need for a new maintenance facility. And then what was the other?
And new station.
And a new station would be something that ARPA could fund. There is the ability to provide dollars to emergency service providers. And so what I need to do is a little more research to see exactly what that means, but I can certainly add it to the list.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Mr. Guerrero, did you have your hand up?
I did. Thank you.
Yes.
So I I asked some community members and so I'll pass along their comments and then I'll give you some of my own too. So one one comment that I heard was provide dumpsters, sinks and toilets as kind of triage for people that live on the street. That was one comment. A second comment was look to get community gardens and or say farmers markets in in neighborhoods that are not well served by supermarkets. So specifically someone mentioned Tillicum because there is no supermarket there. So those are comments I heard. Onto my own comments. My initial thought, when I heard it, it's a really large amount of money coming to the city and, and what what I thought our most obvious need is, is to help people that live on the street. And I know certainly Lhasa and other groups do a great job with what they have, supporting those people, but even as I look out the window, I can see someone's belongings outside City Hall. And, and I think we all feel for those people. And I think we might have an opportunity now to really address that issue because of the amount of funding we have available. And so I would, personally, I'd love to see a real effort to, to help those people get out of that situation. And I, and like I said, I realize Lhasa is, is really doing that in a great way. And I was aware that they were looking at additional property. I, I thought it was great to hear specifically what that's for, because that does sound like it's hitting a a space that nobody else gets to, right? We, we do talk about homelessness, but then what happens at the, kind of the very next tier of poverty is, we don't have places for those people. If we get them off the street, then where do they go after that? I know, I know we're hoping that they develop some self-sufficiency, but it takes a long time and it takes money. And I, I, I would be a very strong supporter of what you're proposing there and potentially even on a larger scale, I think. So those are my thoughts.
Great. Mr. Pearson, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay, great. About Mr. Wegeman?
I can't pass an opportunity to comment. You know, on the, on the stuff that was sent out to us, there's a list of things that the council has already put a list that says that there's a council member's support, at least one council member supports that list. My, my hope is that there'll be other things that we can add to that. And, and, and it looks like we have time to do that. So as Mr. Guerrero suggested, you know, some, some of the things that are out there that really, from my perspective, that need to be fixed is this, this homeless situation. But in, and it's already been tossed out that and the, the mental health issue, you know, so we're already doing some things there. When, when we say homeless, it, 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 from my perspective, it breaks into lots of different folks. You know, you, you have people that have mental health issues and we gotta solve that piece. You have people that have lost their jobs and have been living paycheck to paycheck. And all of a sudden, whoops, there's no place for me to live. And so you know, as I sit on the school board and I look at things that, that we could do a, as an education system, I, I talked to a young lady today that wasn't in Clover Park School District, but was in University Place School District. And she said that, you know, she got, when she said, I'm thirty years old now, and I didn't know about paying taxes. I didn't do some of those kind of things. So some of the life skills. But I think looking at helping, you know, some, I think one of the words that was thrown out here, we need to have counselors out there. Counselors to help young people evaluate their skill set and their interest set. Once we know what that is, then we can put them on a track to some kind of education program that will allow them to reach whatever that goal is for them. This young lady that I spoke to today, she said, you know, I'd always wanted to be a vet. But when I finished up high school, all of a sudden I'm ready to go to look at a college, and I don't have the prerequisites. I'm not ready. So somehow I got there, you know, and University Place was a student out of that district. And they struggle for those things. So, and I think that's an area that certainly from the education side, I think we need to look at. But as a community, we need to look at that and help people figure out what it is they really want to do, what their skills are, and then how to link them up. I mean, we, we just look at the people and discuss discussion today, you know, Pierce College and Volk School, they're out there working every day trying to help people get to a skill set where they can support their families or support themselves. And how do we as a community, I, I know sitting, looking at the K through twelve, everybody keeps throwing things over the fence. You know, I mean, we're feeding in many of our kids two meals a day. So we're doing some of those kind of things, but is that really an education task? I know that our teachers tell us that if a child is hungry, they can't learn. Okay, so that makes logical sense. But so as, as James has said, we've got a big bucket of money here. Where do we plug that in to fix some of these issues? You know, sometimes they, we throw the word around as systemic. Is it a systemic problem that we have in our community? Maybe not, or maybe it is. And if it is, then how do we fix it?
If I, if I could segue on that.
Yes, Mr. Larson, go ahead.
One of our biggest problems in this community is that the community exists of a number of different ethnically separated communities, and we don't talk to each other. And the Korean community, you know, they're, they're isolated in a way. And I just wondered whether some of this money could be used to help coordinate our communication among ourselves and make Lakewood a comprehensive community rather than a, a community of communities. And just throwing that out there, I was talking to Councilmember Branstad about this earlier today. And he thought that, that that was an issue that just we don't really know how to solve yet, or haven't, we've thought about it and, and we recognize it, but what do we do? And I don't know whether any of this money can be used for what at this point is a more subtle perspective, but nevertheless real.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Larson. Mr. Combs, do you have any comments?
I do. I'll be, I'll be brief. My my hope would be that we would be able to place this in the preventive medicine category and addressing the existing issues. And, and I think that all the speakers so far, you know, from Brian to Lhasa, have all addressed those. And I, I, I would agree with all those. I think those are all preventive and existing issues. And then the transitionary work that comes after that. And I do support emergency housing and other types of housing. I would like to see the funds appropriated in a way that actually builds some compounds, some value in some way, a value add, a public-private partnership. And although I am very supportive of the programs, I'd be very careful in lending any endorsement to anything until we are able to understand better how those are gonna be, any funds will be used and and how, how we would set up a, a method for some accountability on that. But I'm a big fan of participating, and I think we, we need to. I don't know that it is just in the I don't know, I don't believe it is just a homeless category. I believe it covers lots of different things, everything from the lost youth and, and I really appreciated the comments about community resiliency. I think there's a lot of that, more of that than METI. And, and that type of outreach will actually bridge a little bit more of the gap that I think Lynn was referring to. We're more likely to communicate as a community if we're supporting and reaching out to help one another. And so I love the programs. I look forward to seeing a list. And I'm, I would vote more for something that is gonna have a compound impact or improve something where it's a physical asset. And I like the idea of building housing, but how that structure and how that ownership is set up is gonna be, in my mind, a very critical question. And to what place does it go and how much and, and so on. But I think you gotta throw every idea on the wall, you know, throw the spaghetti to the wall and see what sticks. And and I know we're at the early stage, so that's, that's all my comments right now.
Thank you, Mr. Combs. We appreciate it.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
We have, Ms. Hutchins would like to make another comment. And then also, Mr. Bokey would like to speak on behalf of the county and how they're spending the dollars as well.
Yeah, absolutely. So, go right ahead, Jen.
Okay, thank you. So, three quick things. First of all, James, I appreciate what you said. And I didn't mention anything about being primarily focused on people right on the street because Lhasa is the recipient of five hundred thousand dollars from the state of Washington. And we are going to be putting showers and laundry, and I'm very excited about that. And I was challenged at one point saying, it's a lot of money. Can't you just give people quarters to go do their laundry? And the thought is, well, we're really more than, we're, there's more to us than clean clothes. It's also trying to engage in a relationship with someone to get them in off the street. So we will be announcing plans on that very soon. Secondly, I wanted to say that, and some of what I want to say, Philip, complements what you just mentioned. And that is, there's a great deal, when I first look at this money, I'm thinking, that's a lot of money. And then you look at the needs and all of a sudden, you know, it, it doesn't look like that much money. And so I think that the way to make that money go further is to leverage it and to think about how important workforce development is, because we could be housing people forever. And if we're gonna get them jobs at a dollar ninety-nine an hour, they're gonna continue to be homeless forever. But if instead we did partnerships with the local technical colleges and workforce development and housed people while they were in programs, then maybe we would bring more to our, our community and really create solutions. The third point is just that I think the volunteers make the world go round. And so thank you all for being here and listening to this.
Great. Thank you again, Jen. And Councilmember Bokey, would you go right ahead and give us your kind words?
Thank you very much, Commissioner Daniels. Yeah, I just, in my day job, I work for the county council, and I just wanted to update all of you on, they passed a supplemental budget yesterday afternoon, yesterday evening that spent another large portion, or at least I, I would, wouldn't say spent, but have directed funds for nearly thirty million dollars last night of their ARPA money. Remember the council? The county is gonna get about a hundred and seventy-seven million over two years. They did the first round very, very early. In fact, they, they passed the ordinance prior to the money even being received. And a lot of that had to do with business assistance and some, some direct assistance immediately. This time around, it was a little bit different, and so I'll just go through them fairly quickly. The first is they set aside fifteen million dollars for improvement of broadband. We, we haven't talked much about this in Lakewood, or we haven't talked much at all. But the, the county council has had some studies done or a major study about, and it was fortuitous because the broadband money has become available and is, and is allowed use under ARPA. There's also other money coming down from the federal government potentially. There are a number of areas within the county that do not have very good broadband service. In fact, it's a very weak service, or in some cases, none at all. And so the, the county will be moving forward with that money. Hopefully that will turn into more money from the federal government, also private, because remember the broadband is still basically in this county anyway, a, a private function. So we're hoping that that Comcast and other providers will, this will incentivize them to come forward with more money. But that is a major issue for the, the county, especially in the rural areas. As Ms. Spear mentioned, there's five million dollars. That's to help purchase the property in South Tacoma. We call, I believe it's on Hosmer Street is the Comfort Inn. That information was in the, the newspaper. I believe Tacoma is chipping in another five million. Lakewood, I, I will tell you upfront, Lakewood has expressed an interest also in being a partner in that project. It wouldn't be to the tune of five million dollars. It would be much less, and that, that would allow us to our goal, I, I believe, is to lock down a few, availability of a few rooms every night. There's also eight million dollars set aside for small business relief. One is four million dollars in innovation grants. These are grants up to twenty thousand dollars that will have to be matched by the small businesses. And that, and, and those are, the, the economic development department will are, is going to define the rules of that program. There's also four million dollars for technical assistance, which is legal assistance, tax assistance, and those kind of things for small businesses. The amendment that passed last night limits those to unincorporated Pierce County. So if the city of Lakewood wants to become a participant in it for our small businesses, we'll, we'll have to bring some money to the table. There's also, and, and I can't speak much to this, this came from the agricultural community, five hundred thousand dollars for a centralized agricultural facility. It's something the ag community has asked for. As the agriculture in the county has kind of wound down the ability to process food and to warehouse it properly has kind of, is diminished, to put it mildly. And in some cases, when it comes to meats, has completely gone away. So the, see, you get the idea. So, and there were some other odds and ends, but basically as we sit tonight, the county has left in its contingency under ARPA a little over eight million dollars. We are also expecting some money to come back that was previously allocated, and that would be in the area of vaccinations and testing. Were under, we, we, the, the county council put that money forward because they didn't know that the federal government was gonna come up with money, but we've heard now that they probably will. So there could be a significant amount of money coming back in. And then, of course, as Ms. Spear said, the eighty-eight million dollars, the next eighty-eight million dollars is due next May. So that's all I have from the council side, the county side.
Great. Piggyback on that, what Mr. Bokey did not mention, there's also been a concerted effort by the county council chair and the county executive to invite cities to work with the county to figure out how there might be a cooperative expenditure of funds. So we've heard the term leveraging a couple of times this evening, but that effort is also getting started where you may end up with partnerships, not only for, as he mentioned, the purchase of a hotel, for instance, but other types of partnering to help make more bang for each buck that each of the jurisdictions is getting through ARPA. So that the second meeting to discuss that is getting set up as we speak, and Lakewood is participating in those conversations as well.
Great. Any other follow-up comments?
Don Paul Wegeman, I have another comment.
Yes, Mr. Wegeman.
You know, a, a number of years ago, we used to have a working farm that was part of Western State. And you know, ACLU got involved and shut those kind of things down. But when you really look at what we had there, was we had a place where it was self, almost self-sustaining. And so if we invest in something that could regenerate itself, like the old working farm at Western State, people would have something to do during the day. They'd have a safe place. They could be supervised. And in the meantime, you know, James mentioned community gardens. I mean, they would be producing food for themselves and maybe for others in the community. So to me, that, that makes sense. And I, I've talked to other people about that. They go, wow, that's really a great idea. Well, it's something we did in the past that we did away with that if we, if we had the property and it's some people with some initiative, and, and certainly there's people that have the skills to grow things and help. And so you know, what I see now is people with certain mental health issues. Yeah, we, we find an apartment for them to, to stay in, but they really don't have a place to go. So they just kind of sit in an apartment and watch TV. So they just kind of sit in an apartment and watch TV all day. And they get used or abused or it it it's not productive. Um, certainly, we have people that, uh, haven't made the best use of their early education years. Um, and and but we have the, uh, technical schools and the and the community colleges to try and solve some of those. So those are groups of people with different skill sets that if we had some kind of, um, recurring thing, so there's, and and the other comments that were made, we've got lots of little silos. And if we can get those all together working, um, that's where I would like to see us work.
Great. Any other follow-up questions or comments? Um, Spear, I don't see anyone else.
I don't either. I think we're just about there.
Okay. Uh, any follow-up comments by Ms. Spear?
Um, not related to this, other than to say thank you very much for everybody that's been involved in this discussion tonight. Appreciate you taking your evening hours to join us either in person or virtually. This is very valuable information. You are the subject matter experts on these things. And so that's why the city council wanted to gather feedback from you. So again, thank you very much. And if you have any additional thoughts that come to you in the middle of the night, feel free to contact me, if you would, with those. And I will add them into the presentation that we'll take back to the council, uh, end of August.
And I will mention, if I could too, is for those individuals that are here tonight and your neighbors, friends in the communities, uh, leaders in our in our community, uh, the city of Lakewood put out a questionnaire. I think that's still open is, if I'm not mistaken, but to answer a few questions. Um, the more comments and the more, uh, feedback is better. And so I I urge each and every one of you to reach out to one, two, three, five of your, um, closest friends and family or or coworkers or business owners, um, to fill out those, uh, because, uh, I find in the past, um, the community involvement, um, has kind of, you know, dissipated and and not as much people participate. So I urge to everyone to go out and reach out. And the more that we do, they feel like they, uh, have a voice and they feel that they, uh, were contributed to some of this information. So that's my my little comment and plea to each and every one of you. So again, thank you as well for joining us tonight. And, uh, everyone have a safe, uh, evening and and thanks again.
And for those who may be watching this recording at some point in the future, the place to go to for that survey is just the city's website. So cityoflakewood.us slash A R P A. And you can go right to the survey from there. Thank you.
Great. Um, again, so we'll move then to reports from staff, um, at this time. If Ms. Spear, you have any reports?
Uh, very quickly, and Mr. Bokey may mention this as well, but last night, the city council met and they actually took action on the twenty twenty-one comprehensive plan amendments. They adopted all of them except for twenty twenty-one oh four. That's the one that was dealing with housing and, um, in part was was going to authorize, uh, two and three family dwellings in the R one through R four zones and also multifamily within the M R one and M R two zones. And then they talked about maybe adding into the comprehensive plan the text that was in another part of that amendment, but decided to pull it all because they want there to be much more discussion about this whole issue with the community and with you, the planning commission. So it's not dead. It's they pulled it out because they want to spend more time on it. And I have a feeling it's going to be part of your work plan, uh, in twenty twenty-two and possibly longer. If you look at what the city of Tacoma is doing right now with their, uh, work to engage everyone regarding how they're looking to, I don't want to say upzone, but add additional uses within their residential zones. Um, there was conversation about that last night by the council. Uh, one of the other things that'll come out of the planning commission or to the planning commission from last night was, uh, they did confirm that they want the planning commission to give them more feedback and recommendations on the energy and climate change chapter, how to implement that. So that'll be, um, coming back to you as well. Um, and then there's a third topic that came up in part because of public comment. There were quite a few people there last evening that were concerned about tree preservation. And that will be an issue that will now be coming to the planning commission per council direction. So we have three pretty hefty topics that have already been identified for the twenty twenty-two work plan if they don't start earlier than that. Having said all of that, um, after tonight, the commission actually will not be meeting again until September. So you get to enjoy the rest of July and August, uh, have vacation, whatever you're going to do. And then we'll be back, um, presumably in person or, uh, remote. It will be a hybrid system as well, I think, going forward. But the city hall will be open for meetings, uh, as you come back in the fall. And that's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much. Uh, Councilmember Bokey, you have some additional comments or reports?
Thank you, Chair Daniels. Um, actually, Ms. Spear did a great job of recapping what happened last night and did a much better job than I would have because I, um, I left, I would have left out a couple of items, but I was just going to tell you about oh four. And and we did, we did take that out. We did meet here, uh, in chambers last night. And that was, that was very, very nice. Um, we're looking forward to August third as National Night Out. There are ten locations now. Um, I urge you guys, if you, there's one locally for you guys to to go and, uh, partake in the festivities. That's a Tuesday night. And the twenty-fifth anniversary celebration, um, has, you know, that would, and I think Mr. Speed, who's our resident historian, would be able to tell us the exact date. We're missing that exact date because of COVID. And so it's going to be on September eighteenth, um, right at the Colonial Plaza. So, um, other than that, we're just glad to be getting rolling on these things. Um, and so I I could talk to what Ms. Spear mentioned. Um, a number of cities, so so uh, Chair Derek Young and Executive Bruce Stanmeyer held a held a roundtable discussion in one evening. I believe Ms. Spear was on it, a city manager. Uh, Caulfield was on the call with a ton of other folks from the various cities in the in in Pierce County. And, uh, those cities got back to the county. Um, not everybody, not all the cities got back to the county. Lakewood was one of them. And I would say that almost every city that got back to us, uh, at the county, that talked about, um, partnering on housing and homelessness. Um, and one or two of them talked about, um, sewers, uh, University Place is interested in sewer extensions. One of the things that ARPA allows, um, is broadband expenditures on broadband sewer and water. Of course, we don't do our own water here in, um, in in the city of Lakewood. So, um, but we may be interested in sewer. Um, and it would probably be in the form of a matching program so that discussion. So as we're teeing up that discussion at the county, um, it'll be along the lines of, uh, we'll have a staffer there to to discuss, um, how those sewer projects and water projects may work, um, various allowable items under. And there's actually surface water things that if it's a water quality issue can be paid for under ARPA. And then we'll have someone talk about the housing and homeless things because there is a lot of interest in that countywide. Um, so with that, I'll 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 leave it at that. Um, I don't even know what we have for study session next week. That's too far ahead of me. But anyway, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it, Mr. Bokey. Okay, any other comments from commissioners? I don't see. I don't see. Hey, here, nothing, so I I can't see everybody. And, oh, there we go. Okay. No, no hands have been raised. So I guess at this time, uh, we'll call the meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great summer and we'll talk to you in September.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Spears, Ms. Deveraux as well. Thank you.